Hi there, how are you?
Good.
How are you? Continuing along. You're number three of our three for the day.
Sorry.
So, okay, so this is MTC. So first what we do with everybody, just to give you a little heads up on who we are. So my name's Stephanie McGowan. I'm newly chair. This is my fifth year on the board. I've lived in Foxborough for 27 years. I didn't grow up here, but I married a townie, so we've been here.
That counts.
Yeah, raised our kids, you know, school through Foxborough schools. And it's a pleasure to have you here today.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
I am Debbie Jettina, recently elected to the board. I have lived in town my whole life, raised my kids, my grandkids. So I am very invested in how the community succeeds. And I'm happy to have you here and I hope things go well.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Yugner, the vice chair, newly elected as well. Spent 32 years in the private sector, the last 12 and a half actually on the public side doing the school business manager's role. And been involved with the building committee for 23 years in town, so pretty much every project that's been done, I've been involved with. And again, looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Good afternoon, Mark Elfman. I'm in my ninth year of my third term here on the board. Lived in town, worked in town for the last 35 years, volunteered for most of those 35 years. Like Steph, not a townie, but I married one, so semi-close. Raised my kids here, both graduated Foxborough High School, so community is very important to us.
And we have a fifth member who's listening in but not here today, Dennis. Couldn't make it, so.
So he's, yeah, he's listening. I keep forgetting about Dennis.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, Dennis. Out of sight, out of mind, I guess. I guess I'm like this, I'm too few in here. Okay, so basically we did, we have same questions we asked everybody. We broke them down into topics and then if we have some questions underneath, we feel like you've already hit the answer to a follow-up question, we'll just bypass it. So first topic is legal expertise. This gives us a chance for you to tell us about yourself. Please give us some background on your firm and why you believe you would be a good legal partner for the town of Foxborough.
Great. So I'll field this and Lisa can jump in. First of all, Jay Tallerman, partner, Mead Tallerman-Costa, Lisa Mead, partner with us as well. We've been there since the very beginning. So Mead Tallerman-Costa is a municipal law firm. We represent about 30 towns right now and do some special counsel with other towns. We were born more or less around 2004, largely as a, we started out, I came, Lisa came from representing the city of Somerville. Before that, she was the mayor in Newburyport. I came from KP Law, then Copelman and Page. And so we joined up with another partner at the time, did a lot of land use work, got our, a couple of years later, got our first town as town council. And we've been kind of in a steady kind of growth since then. We've expanded the firm quite a bit. We have three offices now, represent a whole bunch of towns. When we decided to do this, we thought there would maybe be a different way, maybe a better way of delivering municipal legal services. And there's no right way. We just felt that with Lisa's experience as mayor and some of the experiences I had at KP Law and then as a municipal official in my own town, I'm a resident of Norfolk, I grew up in Medfield, I've been in Norfolk since 1995, I'm the town moderator. So we're like entrenched in municipal government, the two of us. We felt there was an opportunity to treat this more like a partnership with the communities that we represented. Now, there are communities that perfectly enjoy having an attorney that should sit and wait for a phone call. And we're always happy to sit and wait for a phone call if that's what it is. But we think the strength of our services or the strength of municipal council services could be a model whereby, you know, we're not policymakers, but we could be right there with you every step of the way. And how do we manage that? How do we do that? First of all, it's the people that we bring on board at our firm. And second, it's just, we figure out ways to make it economically work for you all so it doesn't cost you a million dollars to have town council around a lot. And that is reflected in our cover letter and our fee proposal. But we want to help you resolve issues before they become problems. We want to be there. We want to know what your, what bylaws you're working on for town meeting, what your budget looks like, what are your big contracts and big projects out there? What are the problems you might have with your budget in the upcoming year? So we can help you resolve those issues going in. And that's kind of the model that we've had since the very beginning of our practice. It seems to work pretty well. We do things like office hours, once or once every other week, once a month, whenever you like them. We don't often charge by the hour unless you would prefer us to charge by the hour so we can have more unlimited access. We give seminars, we attend, under most of our proposals, we attend meetings under our flat fee proposals, planning board, zoning board, conservation commission, select board, whatever it may be. We try and be present for you whenever you need to without breaking the bank. And that's kind of been what we've done since the very beginning. The towns that have joined with us seem to like it. So that's more or less our firm. I don't know if Lisa has anything to add?
I think Lisa Mead, partner with Jay, obviously. I work out of the Newburyport office, I'm from Newburyport. But I'm often in Foxborough, in fact, I taught, Jay and I both teach for the MMA program, the municipal, and we had it here one year, 2019 I think, was right before COVID shut down, so I was driving down here Friday to do it. And I think Jay's right, what we, what I tried to do when we formed this firm is put the word council back into town council as opposed to your lawyer, right? Because being a good attorney is providing advice, what are the risks and what are the benefits? And as the decision maker, you kind of want to know that in advance. You don't want to say afterwards, well, I wish I would have known that going into it. And whatever the decisions are that you make, we're going to go defend you, but we're going to make sure that you have all the information upfront to make the best decisions that are good for you. And then we as a team are going to make that happen however it is. And I think an example I can use for kind of the, being a part of the policymaking is, we've represented the town of Ashland since 2007. It was our first community. And so I've been lead council there since 2007. And I do office hours out there. And the town needed to build a public safety building, so we started six years ago, I think. And we negotiated an agreement with a very large property owner and he agreed to give the town the land, and he wouldn't actually give the town the land. And so the town manager had a long-term strategy. We really talked about it back and forth over this period of time. So we ended up taking the land and not paying anything based upon the gift agreement that we had negotiated and drafted. And interestingly enough, the public safety building is built and the, we are resolving any matters regarding an adjacent piece of property that the town manager also wanted tomorrow. We are completing a purchase and sale of that. But there was a long-term vision that we worked through, the pros and cons of it, how we would negotiate it, what we needed to get at town meeting, what we needed to do to work with the landowner in order to achieve the goal of the town. And had we been somebody that kind of just parachuted in and parachuted out, he wouldn't have had the benefit of our council and I wouldn't have been able to give him the good advice because I wouldn't have really known what his long-term vision was, right? So the sharing of that, pushing things back and forth, I think are really important, the kind of services we provide and our various fee agreements allow that to occur. So that's who we are.
Please describe your approach to managing municipal law issues for your municipal clients.
So, and some of it depends on how the town wants to do it and some of it depends upon the arrangements. Again, if you accepted our application and appointed us and wanted some office hours, we'd be delivering some services there. We have a primary backup. In this case, we suggest two subsidiary backups, but then we also have folks with specialties too. So everything would come through me as the primary. I've got two immediate backups on primary, kind of if I'm not around and can't be reached. But then we have, we're a very partner-driven firm, even though we have associates, we'd like you to be able to reach a partner in charge of a particular project. So for example, Lisa handles all of our high-stakes contracting. So if you had an issue, say, and Bill, we talked about this a little bit when I met with you and Paige, if you had an issue out on Route 1 that was very contract devoted, then Lisa would be in charge of that, you know? We would all be informed and, but you would be getting the delivery of services through someone who's right there on the front line. There wouldn't be multiple filters, it wouldn't be a parade of associates, it would be Lisa working with you on, as the chief negotiator or chief drafts person or what have you. Then we have backup for that. We've got our real estate people who can put together all the real estate elements of something. We've got, we've got litigators that can, a team, put a team of litigation together or at least evaluate potential claims. So we're, we make sure that things are centralized enough to make the select board and Paige or whoever your town manager is comfortable with the, how you get to the services, but then we make sure that every single set of services is going to be working through one of us partners. There's five of us right now and then we kind of deliver from there. We help size up projects, what they are, as Lisa just said, we help issue spots so you can be on the right track. We are, fortunately for us and perhaps for you, I'm, I have an office right here in Millis, so we're close by. We've got a smaller team here in Millis, but we can put people on it quickly, attend those meetings as need be. We have a little bit of local knowledge because of, I live nearby, one town over, Kate Federoff, who's another primary contact, lives in Easton, so we're pretty familiar with the area. So that we kind of, that hands-on approach that we talked about at the top here a little bit. And then the rest of it, Bill, is really the financial model, the delivery of services. If you opted for one of our two flat fee proposals, to me, it's just super user-friendly. You're about the right size to think about that, whether it was litigation in or litigation excluded in that. It's just a comfort level and it allows you to kind of get the services you want. And we think that's been really helpful for a town your size in the delivery of services.
I want to add one section to that because not everything is a big project, right? There's a lot of stuff that happens on a day-to-day basis in the town that needs to get done in order for services to be delivered to constituents, to get projects done. So one of the things, for example, that we've done is around how we efficiently provide services and that is our contract review, right? So it, we, I've developed a set of contracts that I give to every single one of my municipalities. We tailor it for the municipality, you know, we'll look at your bylaws, we'll look at your rules and regulations and make sure that the contracts include terms that are important to the town of Foxborough. But we know that the provision in the contract will protect the town. And so the idea is that those contract gets attached, those contracts gets attached to any of the RFPs that go out to bid and everybody is using the same contracts so that you're not spending your time and our time and your money that I can renegotiate an engineering contract every single time you need engineering services, right? Which is ridiculous. We have a form of a contract that we know is acceptable, even though they don't like it, acceptable to every engineering firm in Mass, and all the big engineering firms in Massachusetts. And so we would give you those and when, I just transitioned a city to one of those, right? It took a little bit because they had some quirks. But now, and their contract for review used to take three weeks to go through their process. If that contract comes in, the procurement officer knows that that contract's been approved, it's that form of contract, it has the right attachments, I get it, I see it, that none of it's been changed and the review is done in 48 hours, right? So we do those kinds of things we've developed over the, what we've learned. And I think that provides more day-to-day efficiency, not necessarily on a big project, but really important to your department heads.
Bill, through the chair, it's okay Steph.
Absolutely, Doc.
Could you explain this concept of office hours?
So we do office hours in a number of our communities. Not every community does it, but, and you can do it any number of ways. We have found over years, and I think it probably started when Lisa was trying to repeat or kind of replicate what she enjoyed as a mayor, where you would have in-house counsel or councilmore present. And that is, say, every other week, we would commit to a number of hours, three, four hours, whatever it is, if that's the schedule you want, and we would be here. And you could design it however you want it. Some towns do a drop-in, you know, town department heads can drop in or make, or some towns do it by appointment, where you set up a sign-up sheet and we just show up and we just answer legal questions. It's all built, baked into the fee already and it's a way of getting, sometimes we do site visits in those office hours. Some towns will do the office hours only when they need them. For example, we're council in Winchester, we have as many as twice a month office hours and they will just say, well, we'll schedule them when we need them. So every town has a different way of doing it. The towns that do use it, and again, we offered in two of our three proposals, it seems to work really well. A building commissioner will come and see us, a finance director will come and see us, a town planner will come and see us, conservation agent, you know, the, obviously a town manager, sometimes a select board member or community preservation. So just drop in, issue spot, talk something through, they're here, it's easier face-to-face sometimes, sometimes we do them virtually. But it's just something that we've been doing since, gosh, since Ashland.
Since 2007. It's preventative medicine, right? It also goes to the point about providing council services because it's team building because you get to know, right? You get to know who those department heads are, you get to know who the chairs or your boards are, you get to know the town manager and what they want or don't want, you get to know the select board members. And that way, they know, oh, town council's coming and I'm going to save that for them. It also prevents a lot of extra phone calls that might not be efficient either. So it's, it goes to that, that whole council idea and making us part of the team so people feel comfortable asking us things ahead of time before it causes trouble.
Thank you. In addition to municipal law, what areas does your firm excel in? Labor issues, potentially MCAD, that type of stuff?
So we have, and you met the head of our labor group, our partner Kate Federoff. Over the years, we didn't start out doing much labor law and about probably 10 years ago now, maybe a little bit longer, we started a labor and employment group. So we have a whole group of now four or five attorneys that can work in it, anything from adversarial stuff to contract negotiation. They have a strong dedicated practice along those lines that as needed or on a regular basis, we deliver those services. We have, in terms of other things other than general municipal, we think we have the strongest land use practice in the Commonwealth from municipalities. The other folks that you're interviewing have good practices, they're, we know them, they're friends of ours. We think our land use practice is second to none. All of us had a grounding, or all the partners, myself, Lisa and Adam, had a grounding in land use law before we started this firm. Whether it's 40B stuff, affordable housing, zoning, planning, wetlands, health enforcement, all those kinds of land use things, we think we are the strongest in the, on the municipal side of anyone. We'd stack up to them. And, you know, we have other specialties too that we do. Our litigation bench is really strong, but our labor group's very strong and growing and as we develop more and more client relationships with that. But our land use in particular, Lisa's contract practice, sophisticated contracts is really strong. There are now two lawyers working full-time under her for working on sophisticated contracts and routine contracts on a day-to-day basis.
And real estate, so we have a real estate group too. And so we have a real estate group that does private transactions, but we, you know, all of our municipalities have real estate transactions and they are, they lead with us on the real estate groups too. So general municipal, real estate, labor, employment, land use.
And that real estate group does everything from just buying a piece of land that you need, selling a piece of land, doing a license or an easement, to running our takings practice as well.
Right. Thank you. What is your experience with issues involving police and fire and more specifically dealing with license to carry appeals, suitability, alcohol?
So a couple of different areas there, let me focus on a couple. So at any given point in time, we've got four or five LTC cases going on. We've represented a lot of chiefs. I've got one right now pending up at the appeals court that's going to be interesting, kind of both on a mass law and maybe a second amendment basis, trying to support our chief in that. But where, we've got, all of our litigation team has done LTC stuff. As to alcohol licensing, I'd say probably most of the firm has worked on alcohol licensing, whether it's enforcement under that, STINGS that we do for our communities to general licensing questions in terms of granting, renewing, under, all the issues under chapter 138, you could think of one-day licenses, all of that stuff that we are dealing with all the time. So, yeah.
Thank you.
When dealing with complex zoning issues, what is your approach?
Complex zoning issues? So, you know, it depends on the issue, right? So certainly, and I'm going to let Jay pipe in here too, you want to, you want to, if it's the town doing some zoning, you want to understand what the goal is of the community and you want to understand very clearly what the existing zoning is. And then if it's a change, you understand what the impact of that change is and what non-conformities are going to be created as a result of any major zoning change. And then the next level up, of course, is the impact on the economics and how that, like what your changes do, how's it going to do with your housing stock or your commercial tax base? You want to understand that. And then you start to do the drafting to understand how it will really impact the zoning bylaw itself and what the result will be. Because you want to understand what the result is before you actually do the bylaw, right? So we kind, that's, we kind of work with the planner, town manager, select board, planning board very carefully along that way before you come up with the ultimate change in your zoning bylaw. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that?
Yeah, and I'll offer two other things. You know, we, and other things in and around zoning bylaws is interpretation and enforcement as well as just general hearings. So again, we will attend or help your boards with their hearings on things. We also advise building commissioners on a daily basis. In fact, today I did a seminar for the Metro West building officials. I give the annual seminar for southeastern Mass, Metro West, northeast and western Mass building officials. So we are working with them constantly to get them smarter on zoning, something that's always a benefit. And another thing that we've been working on a lot as of late is the MBTA zoning. And that is, you know, even though the state has kind of a monolithic model that they'd like you to kind of approach things with, what we've learned is that every town has a different approach to that. And some of it's positive and some of it's not so positive and some of it is grandiose and some of it is, we just want to survive here or we want to fight here. And so what we're, what we have found working on that in a number of our communities just this spring and now coming into the fall, is that we work to tailor our advice on what you want to achieve in that. Even if achieving means you want to kind of do, have a little pushback on it, which happens. We're cognizant of the fact that Foxborough did not pass theirs. We have a number of towns that did and a number of towns that didn't. And we're working with them to either help support their efforts or to work with them to find a way out of this in a way that still protects them to the best of their ability. But no two towns have had the same approach to this. And likewise, we are trying to figure out the path forward, whatever that town wants is going to be. And we know it's not easy. So, but we have been working tooth and nail. We have a direct line to the attorney general's office on all zoning matters. They trust us, they reach out to us on zoning matters. So it's been, it's been a wild ride and, you know, we keep plugging away at it.
Okay, next topic, understanding of town issues and needs. What do you consider to be some of the biggest issues facing municipalities in general?
Well, I would say development, lack of housing and financial needs. I mean, and those all go together, right? So the question is, how do you best balance those for yourself and where is that budget going to be next year? And, you know, it depends on the community, right? And some communities are hitting the housing, some communities are, we're fine with housing, we don't need to worry about it, but we want to grow our commercial tax base. You're in, obviously in a unique situation here, you don't necessarily have that same issue, but, you know, that, that growth and that push and pull, you know, the decline in enrollment in your schools, but you still have school expenses, how do you deal with that versus whatever else is going on in town? How do you keep up with the schools? Need to get everybody else on board to support the schools if you have school projects to do. I think those are some of the biggest, the capital needs and the financial needs that go, financial requirements to support those financial needs.
Yeah, having just rolled out of a busy spring town meeting season, this is, I mean, there are financial issues every year. I really see this past year more than any other year, the towns really stressing against diminishing state aid and having, how there's increased demands on us from the state, but less money. And how to manage that within your tax base, within your levy limit and still keep great employees around, still make sure you're funding education, public works, has been an incredible challenge. I haven't seen this number of towns go for operating overrides in 20 years.
Right.
And, which isn't to say that they're all passing. Some of them are not passing, but I think a number of towns are hitting their one-time funds, they're hitting free cash and stabilization funds for operating. The stress for select boards, for town managers, for finance committees, for school committees is palpable right now. And having to, how to work our way out of it, I've looked at the state budget, it's not awesome. You know, they tried to prop up, you know, chapter 70 money a little bit, not enough, never enough, but, you know, it's, it's putting a patch on it. And so we feel and try and work with you the best we can to help you give good ideas on how to manage that. No great solutions to it, but we know that there's a ton of stress financially.
And the cost of construction, I mean, that's, that's the other thing, right? So the cost of construction, when you have capital needs that have been delayed or you've had other priorities, the cost of construction right now is just, it's mind-boggling and how a community takes care of that within their levy limit is next to impossible. And you certainly can't do more than one project at a time, even though you may have dozens of needs. And again, we don't have all the solutions, we'd be lying to if we did, but any way we can help to, you know, talk about how you work through those, we're available to do that.
I've got a follow-up with what Doc had asked.
Yep, you're right here.
As far as the migrant housing issue, do you have other communities that you're dealing with that have that issue? Obviously, you know Foxborough does. And how are you seeing that play out?
So I've seen it in two, well, I've seen it in a number of the communities, but we had the issue in Yarmouth with some hotels. And we were okay with one location, it seemed appropriate, the, our, we had two significant concerns. One, the impact to our infrastructure in Yarmouth. And the second was the safety of the folks that were there and we felt that one of the hotels was substandard and would, would cause problems through public safety, through public health. So we were working kind of to help facilitate some, but also to push back against another. And it was, it was a pretty difficult challenge. The state obviously has an upper hand on this, so trying to work within that, we did, were able to find a little bit of pushback on one and managed to kind of negotiate it out and they eventually moved those folks elsewhere while still working with the other hotel to manage it. You know, right here, as you know, as I know, as the town moderator in Norfolk, the Bay State is going to, it's up to 450 people there. My town is under a lot of stress. This broke two days before my town meeting and everyone said that they, well, we're going to discuss this at town meeting. I said, well, no, we're not going to discuss it at town meeting. But the entire town is, is in like a little bit of an existential crisis. We have a lot of folks who are supportive of helping these families out, but everyone needs questions answered. And, you know, even if all the intentions are great to help get these people off of floors in Logan Airport, the logistical hurdles for municipality, I mean, 400, you feel the same thing, 450 new folks, maybe call it 50, 60 kids, maybe, in the Norfolk school system, small school system, how do you support that? Where is the money coming from? What about our public safety? Are, do we have to be the ones responsive? You know, are the conditions okay over Bay State, which was closed a while ago and in disrepair? So it touches every single department in town and it's incredibly unfunded or underfunded at the very least.
So I represent, we represent the town of Hadley and Hadley has a hotel there on Route 9, you know, and they have, they got a group of migrants right before school started last fall. Maybe it was in the, in the mid, and it was a huge impact on them because their, their elementary school and middle school, it's local, and then they have regional schools. And they just don't have the infrastructure to handle it at all. And so we helped them discuss with Dussey and with the governor's office, any additional aid, the state reps, state senator, they were able to get them some additional aid in the schools to help support them in the schools because that's a, you know, I'm not telling you anything, there's a huge impact, right? You've got, so, you know, right? So you've got people- You've got, so, you know, right, so, you've got people, kids who don't speak English, and they have to be taught English, but they have to be communicated with on a regular basis. So, you're now bringing in all these second language folks and to support these kids who also have physical and emotional stressors in the school. So, again, you know, there's no right answer. We'd be, we'd be lying to you if we said to you it was, but we can help facilitate, you know, those contacts and negotiations between contracts, state contracts, in order to handle those kind of projects, problems.
Thank you.
Okay, we talked a little bit about the MBTA Communities Act, but how do you possibly see that impacting Foxborough?
So, I think it depends on your, I'm, I'm assuming, but maybe assuming wrongly, that it's gonna come back up in the fall, maybe? I don't know, or?
Well, there's, there's, there's a problem in the fact that the planning board technically can't bring it up for two years.
That's not true.
Okay, well, that'd be good, then.
They need a positive recommendation.
Their own positive.
Their own positive recommendation, they can put it back in front of the town meeting.
Okay. So, that's where we stand at this point, though, is that they didn't give us a positive to start with. It went to town meeting, obviously failed in town meeting miserably. I think 43, 4 and 300 against. So, you know, now we're kind of back to square one with it.
Sure. So, there's a few things. Now, if you are working on something that has a chance, then I think, and we've worked with a number of communities, and we have kind of a hotline with the AG on, on how we structure these. And we have worked with a lot of our planning departments to make sure that where we're putting the districts could be, if your goal is to create more housing, we can figure out ways to choose the districts and the kind of controls to facilitate that. If your goal is to place these districts in areas that generally are already built on, and there's just a potential of housing, even though it's unlikely that it'll ever get built, we have done that model, too.
Those are all approvable.
Those are all approvable. So, some, we've had some towns, granted a minority of them, say, "No, we, we, we wanna get a few projects in." And so, we have figured that out. And we've worked with other towns, like, "Please just do an overlay over something that's been developed in the last 10 years, so there's gonna be minimal impact, at least within the next few years." And we've, we've dealt with that, too. Now, on the flip side of that, if, if it seems like it's a fait accompli and it's not going to happen here, and then we're dealing with the ramifications on it, there's a few issues that we, there can be absolute pushback on some of the things. We think that the AG is wrong, that they can compel you to pass anything. They could impose penalties, and they could make it difficult for you to get grants, if not impossible to get grants. But there is a certain amount of pushback and advocacy that we can provide along those lines as well. So, again, we, we have other towns in a similar position as yours. More have passed than not passed, but we have some that are never, ever, ever going to pass. And we're hope, you know, helping them manage how that will be, including advocacy for what may come next with the next legislate, piece of legislation.
And I, I mean, I have, I have a pretty big community that, they actually did a hybrid of what Jay said. They located a lot of it on an area that was recently developed, and there's no way it's ever gonna be developed, but it was an acceptable zone. And they located a very small part of it in an area that they're gonna allow, you know, triplexes, townhouse triplexes, in a reasonable amount, 'cause it probably would've been developed anyway. So, you know, I think that area allows for like, you know, 40 or 50 houses, max. So, and they ended up passing it at town meeting, 'cause that was kind of the balance, and that's how it was explained. So, there, there is a way to do it if you wanna limit the impact. If you wanna take it back to town meeting, you could change it enough that it would be a significant change, that then the town meeting could see it, even if the planning board said no. But if you wanna take the same thing back, then the planning board have to say yes the second time.
While, while Foxborough has a good commercial base, the largest one, obviously, is the Kraft and Patriots Group, along with Brigham and Mass. General Organizations. Has your firm had any interaction with them, and do you perceive any conflicts of interest?
We've not, and we don't have any conflicts with the Kraft Group or Mass. General.
About 15, maybe even 20 years ago, I had a small thing over at Rodman that I did, but that's not the only thing I've ever done on Route 1 in Foxborough, ever. I've done a little stuff in Walpole on Route 1 over the years, but I've never, you know, no conflicts.
Great, thank you.
Under commu, under client communication, how do you typically manage your relationship with your clients? For example, lead attorney or team, team approach, and why?
So, as Jay was saying, that we, we certainly have a lead attorney, it would be Jay, and then we have the two immediate backups, so that there's always contact. And depending on the issue, we certainly would put a team on it. And you would always know who the lead is on any particular issue. You know, there are some, there are some people that you're gonna, that somebody would get to know. So, there, we have a couple of folks who, Public Records, Open Meeting Law, they answer those all the time, and so, department heads, town clerk, they might just be talking to those people. Wouldn't be talking to Jay necessarily unless it's a really sticky issue. But otherwise, you're talking to Jay or whoever the lead attorney is on it.
And then, the rest of it is on your end. You, however you design the protocol, whether it's always through the town manager and everyone has to get approval, or if things kinda get going, certain department heads have the rights, 'cause they haven't abused the privilege, that's all on your end, and we've, we deal with all different ways of doing it. However you like to do it, in terms of who's got authority to access us, then that's fine. If someone doesn't have authority, or it hasn't gone through the right protocol, then we would direct it probably to the town manager, who would then say, "Yay, you know, yes, go ahead," or, "No, don't go, don't go ahead." So, we're respectful of your protocol as well. We, we have stuff, our kind of hierarchy on our side for these things, and the rest of it is how you like it. There's, and there's no one right way to do that.
Uh, this might be one where, I think you've talked about in a number of different little subcategories, but how would you work with, uh, other town departments and officials to address legal issues and provide legal guidance? I think you just sort of talked about that in the town meeting, uh, the, uh, office meeting.
Right, office hours.
Office hours, yeah.
And, and again, sometimes we get, if it's an ongoing matter, certainly, whether it's litigation or a large special permit project or a large contract or something like that, and we are initially authorized, then we will continue to on that. And over time, through the office hours, we develop rapport. So, likely that the town manager or the select board will have a little bit more free back and forth with that. But we design everything so that your department heads are comfortable with us. How they get access to us is a different story, but we wanna make sure that every department head and every board chair isn't afraid to pick up the phone, either 'cause it's gonna cost too much or because they're somehow intimidated by legal services. We aim to demystify all of the stuff around legal services and, and, and bring it, bring it down and bring up the, the level so that there's good, honest con, communication.
Thank you.
Good, so, under ethics and integrity, you, you somewhat answered this, but I don't know if we were, Bill talked about the Patriots and Kraft Organization, but the question was, do you work with adjacent communities? And if so, how would you deal with any perceived conflict?
So, we represent, and we mentioned this to, to Bill and Paige when we had the initial meet and greet, we do represent Rentham.
Right.
So, and we represent Easton, which isn't, does it touch at one point? But it's one, one town away, so not really. There could be some intermunicipal agreements there, potentially, so.
Is that a sewer, a sewer, a regional sewer agreement?
We are, but I don't think Easton's in that one.
No, but there's somebody that we did.
We did what we did with Mansfield, I know that. So, there is, especially sharing Route 1. I could foresee some things happening with Rentham. What we would do in, in a, if a situation, way, A, there may be a conflict, and we'd have to figure that out and figure out a way to get the, get you all counsel that can help with you. If it's not a conflict, per se, but both towns have an interest in it, we talk. And sometimes those things, everyone can sign off, "Hey, you're really just working on something as a matter of form" that suits both our interests. Obviously, if you're fighting with each other on something, which is possible, then, then we'd have to, we wouldn't represent either. And, and we'd have to, both towns would have to work together to figure it out.
I, I had two small towns that were gonna do a shared regional dog officer, animal control officer, and so, I disclosed, they, of course, knew that I represented both of them. And I said to them, "Look, you guys, if you work out the business arrangement, I can be the drafts person. If I'm not negotiating it on behalf of one community, that's fine." And they worked out the business arrangement, then I was the drafts person. So, it just depends on the situation. But if there was a conflict, we would have to get separate counsel.
So, I think you just actually just answered this question. So, I'll just put it in the record so we have it. Can you provide an example of a time when you, you know, represented two communities and had to navigate the situation involving potential conflict of interest? And I think that's, that was a perfect answer for it. Thank you.
Again, we talked about this a, a little bit, but what is your opinion on retainer billing versus hourly building, billing? And when do you think one option is better than the other?
So, some towns like the hourly, and we try and give options so you're comfortable. We represent some towns where we've said, "We think you're a good fit, maybe for a flat fee." And they say, "You know what? We think we can control our legal services and may get more economy out of doing it by there." It suits them, it could end up suiting you. We do think that one of the two flat fee arrangements kind of works well. I mean, I would speak to someone like Connor Reed, who is the town administrator over in Easton, or, or Kevin Sweet, who has an hourly arrangement over in, in Rentham. It can be different. So, we, it's not so much a retainer as you just pay us the same amount. And some months, we eat the bear, and some months, the bear eats us. But at the end of the day, you know, it works out for us. We kinda look at your past services, your legal budget, we figure it out. I love the notion of the fact that come March, when your legal budget is drying up, you've got a month and a half, two months left, that you don't have to worry about picking up the phone to an attorney because you're running out of money. I, I think that, that's a fabulous way of delivering services, that you don't, you never have to worry about it. And that, those are, those late fiscal year issues can really come up in and around town meeting. The other aspect of our flat fee arrangements that's really great is sometimes you wanna fight over something. And litigation is the single, single biggest driver of litigation, of legal costs. And sometimes, if you're paying by the hour, you don't wanna say, "Oh, my gosh, that's gonna be $40,000, $50,000,000." That, that's just a crusher, we can't go back to town meeting and ask for more money. Sometimes you say, and towns have never, we've been doing this for 20 years, towns have never abused the privilege. Some, knock on wood. Don't, don't, don't be the first. Sometimes you say, "I, I wanna fight this one. Our constituents expect it, we got about a 50-50 shot, but it's, it's the good fight." And I know we're fighting, you know, something that may be, a 40B, for example. It's worth the fight. And if you were paying the same amount every month and litigation is included, then you don't have to worry about the other side of it. And that can be really valuable, 'cause there are some things that are those 50-50 propositions. You know, we're never gonna suggest that someone litigate frivolously or fight frivolously, but sometimes it's in the margin, and it's important to you, and it's important to the people that trust you to, to fight for them. So, we love it, and it's been successful for us, it's been successful for towns. It doesn't fit every town.
And I, I will tell you, my, the town managers I have that have it like to know that that's what their legal budget is every month. They just, that's, they don't, there's no bills coming in that they didn't expect. When June comes around, it's the same amount, it's July, August, right? It's the same amount. And they don't have to worry about going back to the finance committee and asking for a transfer into legal budget. And they can still pick up the phone. You know, you got a crazy zoning board hearing happening, the chair can still pick up the phone and say, "Lisa, this is gonna happen, can you review this decision? Am I going in the right direction? Is this the advice we should give the board?" They're not told, "No, you can't call counsel." And then, guess what happens? In July, we have a piece of litigation, right? 'Cause they were afraid to call us ahead of time. So, it, it works out, it's worked out, it's beneficial. It, again, it goes back to where we started in the beginning. It puts counsel back in to town council. And it helps everybody work in the same direction, on the same team.
Ironically, just from a, a raw business perspective, it's really good for us in a way, too, because if, if litigation is the biggest driver of services, and we're under a flat fee with you, it, it's worth it for us to not litigate. Now, we'll litigate as much as you need, but if we're on the front end, because you don't have to worry about picking up the call, we're lar, we're avoiding, every town that we have a flat fee arrangement and litigation has gone down.
Dramatically.
'Cause we're problem-solving ahead of time. Some fights are inevitable, and it happens. But it, litigation goes down. Litigation is no fun for anyone. Even, even though we make money off of litigation, we don't wanna see you in the papers on a piece of litigation, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, so, in wrapping up, we wanna thank you for your interest in Foxborough. You know, we asked you lots of questions. Do you have a question you would like to ask the board?
I, I have a question. Jay kinda knows his answer, but I'm curious. So, I read the town meeting warrant from this year, 'cause I'm kinda geeky and I actually prepared for the meeting. But, so you have a state hospital, right? And Foxborough State Hospital?
Well, we had, we had the property.
The property was the state hospital, right? And so, Jay said you've already built housing on part of it. But the town, the warrant was that you could sell, that was to amend the special legislation, which I'm sure was a transaction with T-CAM. And then, you had a reuse committee. Do you have any ide, I'm working on the Medfield State Hospital project right now.
Oh, jeez.
And so, I, I, you know, it's, I like it, it's fun, right? So, it's a beautiful piece of property.
It is a beautiful piece.
And the fact that they're gonna be able to save those buildings, you know, I'm a history major, but, is pretty amazing. That all those buildings are gonna be reused, that's the housing. There's no new buildings going up. Those buildings are all gonna be reused for housing. In any event, I'm just curious what the thoughts are about what you're gonna do with it.
So, obviously, the biggest thing we faced when we, when we had the state hospital going to housing was to find the right contractor who would actually do that kind of a renovation.
It's hard.
It's very hard. We have, very lucky out of a, a firm out of Philadelphia who kind of specialized into it. I think it turned out to even be a bigger project than they anticipated. And then, we were able to have a new housing that was kinda built around it, that kind of expanded upon it.
Kinda like the Danvers State Hospital?
Yes.
That's what they did up there, right?
The piece that we were talking about on, on this particular article was a piece of property that, in the trade with the, the state on the, we, we actually took some land to be built for our joint public safety. And so, we took down dorms that were there, and that's what was built on that. Across the street from it was another dorm complex, which, which was allowed to be turned into retail. So, we had like a, a nice little retail hub that was put in. And then, this last, and then we had a huge part that was considered recreation, so we had nice fields and stuff like that. And then, there was a last piece that was given to the town, which was an auditorium building.
Yeah.
And that, the auditorium, quite honestly, we've looked at for years and years, tried to figure out ways to use it. And it's an interesting building, but it is a lot of money to be spent for, not a lot of use for us. So, this particular idea came up from a developer that basically, that it would be turned into, that part would be turned into like a housing, a small housing piece with another kind of more medical component to it behind on some additional property. We split the line to give more land to the joint public safety to protect it and its future needs. And that kinda rounds out how the whole state hospital property got, got resolved.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fascinated by the whole reuse of all these pieces of property, 'cause they're everywhere in the Commonwealth, right? So, anyway, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jay, you wanna ask us?
No, I mean, I'm, I, I get the Foxborough news all the time, 'cause I'm next door, so.
You are a neighbor, that's true.
I am a neighbor, yes.
And just so you know, we're, we're finishing up. You are our last of three today, and at our meeting next Tuesday night, we'll be deliberating and we'll be picking a new town council.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, the last thing I'd say on that, and this question often comes up. We have, so first of all, we know Pat really well. Also, a former KP person like myself. We're very friendly, we've done file transfer. We can get up to speed incredibly quick and to, you know, get a team behind it. I know time is short, and Pat wants to get on with retirement, so, you know, we're, we can get going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.